Good evening, Facebook. This is another weekly episode of the Better Savannah Show, Better Savannah Podcast. Just a weekly show we're producing here during the off-season of elections. My name's Chuck. I'm joined by our founder, John McMasters, and Kerry Smith. I want to give a quick shout out to Will Boswell, who's going to be joining us as a producer. Real soon here, trying to get our content elevated quality just a little bit. Tonight, we're going to have a special show. We've been following Savannah city politics for, you know, between the three of us for almost like combined fifty, sixty years now. We obviously started this page in this group in the 2019 city council cycle. And as we've discussed, that was a historic election here in Savannah. Resulting in nearly every incumbent losing and seven new people on the city council. Since then, we've grown this page to over twenty-five hundred followers, you know, just in the last thirty days. We've reached twelve thousand people, twenty-eight hundred engagements. We really appreciate, we thank you, we ask that you continue to share, continue to like this content, and continue to spread it around Facebook to all of your social networks within our network. Tonight, we're going to be, like I said, talking about the top ten events for the Savannah City Council for the year 2020, the first year in office, basically. And we're going to go through this list, you know, this top ten style. This list came from our founder, John McMasters, but all of us have had input to kind of talk about each of these events. All right. Be sure to check out our website, www.bettersavannah.org. You can go and look at our mean library over the course of, you know, a year and a half of elections and see kind of the general direction. We're trying to push the electorate in, you know, the politics in. There's links to, there's now links to two dozen interview and debate discussions. So about twenty-five different videos that are directly linked from different things we've done over the last eighteen to twenty months. And obviously, we ask that you invest in this effort when you're at that website, bettersavannah.org. Click the join membership button. Just seven dollars a month will go a long way towards changing the direction of Savannah and Chatham County in our coastal area. All right. So with that being said, I want to bring John in. John, I see you're here. Kerry is around here somewhere. I think, I think she popped off. She'll probably be back on. John, it's been quite a year. We had been quite a month for us here at Better Savannah with the last two episodes. Murray Silver and Jim Marikas, be sure to see those episodes here on our page. John, what are your thoughts before we head into this top ten?
Well, uh, good question, Chuck. It's true. We, we just had two back-to-back, really great discussions. One with Murray Silver, the Oracle of Arts Park, 2015 mayor role candidate. Unvarnished, spot-on guy, true friend. And then, of course, Jim Marikas' talk with us last week, Chuck, was so illuminating to be able to hear about what really went down at the end of Connect. So having said that, you know, tonight's show's a casual show, a breather, if you will, between bigger stuff. So it's a relaxed night. It's a reflective night. And yeah, I've actually given the, the viewers, instead of a top ten, I've added a bonus. There's eleven subjects that I want to bring up and toss around with you and Kerry. So that our viewers will hopefully get some insight into how we see things from a macro as well as a micro area. And I want to preface this by saying that some of these things are small issues, but very indicative of larger problems. Sure. And some of them are huge issues that have affected the entire nature of council. So having, having said that, let me tell you, the eleventh one, the bottom of the list, the bonus.
This is like, this is like, this is like an honorable mention, right? Like, this is like an honorable mention, like, not quite in the top ten. But we see this as like, the, like, kind of the pain annoying, kind of just like something that's really bothersome that we're seeing from a lot of different older people. Want us to, wants to tell us what number ten is, John?
Okay, well, first of all, it's, it's a flux issue because what I'm going to describe, no one can find fault with, that is doing constituent services as an elected representative. I think where it really falls down is when what is constituent services, so I'll just read it to you. Number eleven, praising routine maintenance as significant progress. And I've got some examples. And again, no, no one can, can, no one dare criticize an elected representative for, for doing this. This is what I call low-hanging fruit. This is a sort of bread and butter stuff that every alderman has to, has to contend with and hopefully do a good job at. But the fact that it's elevated to every day or every other day post with a lot of exclamation marks and self-congratulatory tone. I, I think we're trying to make something out of something that's not quite as big as it is. So instance, one alderman, just three or four days ago, posted that the on the Truman Linear Bike Path, some of the old pavement on the pathway has been replaced. And a quote-unquote "ton" of work has also gone into cutting back some overgrown vegetation. Look, and I'm sure that needed to be done, fundamental stuff, but come on, guys, that, that's, that's routine. Parks and trees, city service, maintenance work. It just does not rise to the levels that I think it's being projected to be. Second item, same Facebook page from an alderman, exalting the fact, you know, great news. It's time for a deep clean of Savannah's most famous fountain, the Forsyth Park Fountain. You know what? That, that fountain isn't even in his district. So I, I think we're reaching there. We're trying to look busy. We're trying to look accomplished. Another example is over in Bacon Park in the Bonneville neighborhoods. You know, big Facebook post, great news. We've got a new pavilion with picnic tables for more shade and new playground equipment. You know what? That should not, not get done. That should just get done on a regular course of business. All of those things, I'm sure, were on the capital improvement budget scheduled to happen long before this council probably was sworn in. So again, I, you know, it just seems a little reachy to me. And then, lastly, as an example, you know, several older people are making a big deal out of rock the block is back. Basically, that's dragging these dumpsters into a neighborhood so that people can put their, their dry cuttings and yard waste in them. Well, why is that even necessary?
Let's be clear, that's necessary because you don't have enough to do regular maintenance of our, our lanes.
Yeah, they're falling behind on regular yard waste pickup. So that's a, that's a shortfall. And I understand it happens. But to spin that around one hundred and eighty degrees and herald the fact that we've got dumpsters so that you can now transport your yard waste to that location because the city isn't able to keep up with its schedule, COVID or otherwise. It, it just doesn't rise to the occasion of backslaps and congratulations. So again, love these people for doing what they're doing. But if they were working on big, significant policy platforms as well as this regular bread and butter stuff, I probably wouldn't even mention it. That's number eleven.
So that's our honorable mention, number eleven. I mean, I can't tell you. I have messaged this to several people, you know, that are involved in, in this world with us. And I just said, you know, look, being a city council person is just not about, you know, doing social work or, or being a faux police person, you know, like, that's what we hire those people for. Like, we're, we want you to work on the policy and not the execution. You know, and so I think that falls a lot in line with this, just kind of great. This is kind of like a super annoying thing about this first year of council that I'm really sick of.
That's why it's at the bottom of the list.
Yeah, it didn't even really make the top ten. It's just an honorable mention. So let's move on to the number ten item for top ten city council issues this year. And that is the Fairgrounds RFP blunder. And this is also very in the news recently. You pointed out the other day on several, you know, threads on your own page and on some others, John, that, you know, this RFP seemingly got bundled. All the while, Seda seemed to be working in the background for a separate movie studio deal up at their property at the Georgia Tech campus. Number ten, John, Fairgrounds RFP blunder. What do you got for us?
Chuck, that's a, that's a good summation. And this, this is a situation where my heart and our heart collectively goes out to the fifth district and older woman, Estella Shabazz, who's, who's been very doggedly advocating for her district to get some economic opportunity and, and development for, you know, the district that probably has the highest percentage of poverty in the city of Savannah. This area, of course, is part of West Savannah, which is basically the, the new afterthought of, of council. The, the second and third districts have gentrified significantly in the last, you know, five, six years. And now, it's pretty clear that that area, West Savannah, specifically District Five, really could use this sort of investment and change agent for that Fairgrounds property. Now, I remember very clearly that the way this went down is the mayor said, hold on, Estella, you cannot, you cannot unilaterally decide what's going to go there. With all due respect, this is a, the funding source is citywide and it needs to be viewed as a citywide decision. But it is your district. So we need to hold some listening sessions and hear from everyone, not only in the district, but outside of the district, but clearly inside the district as well. And then we can proceed. So that was delay number one. Kind of almost reasonable. So those listening sessions happened to not, not any great degree. But the point is enough data was collected and enough delay occurred to put out an RFP. Request for Proposals to Develop the Fifty-Four Acre Tractor Land Known as the Fairgrounds in the Fifth District. Well, Pat Monahan oversaw the writing of the RFP and the distribution of it. And when the responses came back, and I think there were three valid bidders with concepts for development of the property. Monahan took him in and opened him. He, he left. Michael Brown came in. And the first thing Michael Brown says is, oh, that, that former city manager mishandled the RFP.
Right, 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 right.
You guys can't proceed. Another stop, Fifth District. You're not going to get what you were promised. You're not going to get the economic development that you so desperately need. So Michael Brown says, I'm sorry, we're going to have to redo the RFP process because it, instead of a ninety-day period, in the first RFP, it was only fifty-seven days. Anyway, they suck that up, continue to march along like good soldiers. And all of a sudden, Michael Brown says, oh, by the way, we have soil contamination problems and a lack of water and sewer.
Right.
Right. So I'm sorry to drag this one out, but this is a major piece of investment in a district that desperately needs it. And you got the original delay from the mayor. You got the RFP problem. Then, now that it's getting close to the wire, magically, contamination issues start to surface. In the meantime, Seda announces on a piece of property that they own, which pay no property taxes on, out just off of ninety-five, not even in the city of Savannah. They want the Soundstage Film Business Experiment and Investment, which isn't, which is good overall for the county. But it, it's not targeted like it was in the Fairgrounds. And the patience and, and, and trust and faith that people put that it would happen has now been broken. So that, that's my number ten, Fairgrounds blunder. There's a lot of controversy and discussion going on about this right now in council and in the community. So keep your eyes on it. That's our assessment.
All right, all right. Number nine, number nine on our top ten slash eleven list of controversies and issues the council faced in their first year. I mean, number nine is very obvious to anybody following our page or following the local mayor. Kerry, I see you're back on with us. How many task forces do you suppose the mayor has created? The number nine on our top ten list is Task Force saturation levels. And I think it's somewhere, I don't know, ten, eleven. How many do you think it is?
Twelve.
Twelve task forces. What are you, what are your thoughts on that before we get John's rant about these task forces? Because I know what I think.
Well, if I could see what the deliverables were of each of these task force to see what kind of policies that were going to come out of each of these task force. It seems like there's been a big shift that we have more interaction from the community on task force. But I don't know how much money we're spending on external plans to initiate. So it's like we went from one model of like having a consulting group coming in and doing plans to having task force. But we're, are, you know, we could complain that now we're not spending the money on, you know, task on, on consulting group, thousands, million dollars, how much ever is. But now we have task force. Are we seeing a result from these task force? I would bear to say not yet, not immediate. I don't see what those resolutions are in implementation. So I do see somewhat of a policy shift. We have a more interactive model from the community, which would be really good if I could see what those policy deliverables are. And that's something I want to see by the end of 2021, if that makes sense.
Well, Kerry, some, some of these recently created task forces are not expected or, or they have not been asked to produce their, their final studies for a year. Some, I think, a year and a half. So if you look at where we are in the election cycle of the term, some of these things will, will be studies that have not been implemented. I guarantee you, by the time we start up the next election cycle. Here, here's my, my take on it. These, since, since the mayor, and I'm, I'm previewing a little bit here. Since the mayor has squashed through the rules change package, any discussion directly from his colleagues of policy on the, on the agenda. It's like this ad hoc way of, you create these task forces. And I'm, I'm going to read through the list and, and you'll, you'll understand by the focus.
Do you have them all written down, John?
Yes, yes.
Oh, let's, let's hear it. Let's hear this list. This is a list of all the task forces created by the mayor and council.
I think I'm missing one. But anyway.
Let's see, let's see.
Here, the number one is the Savannah Ability Task Force. Interesting play on words there, having to do with mobility, Savannah ability. I mean, a lot of thought went into forming up this PR effort. So number two, the re-entry task force. I, I think that's going to be a winner task force because, you know, people who get on the wrong side of the law, do their, do their time, pay their penance, need to be able to re-enter the workforce and do it, you know, almost effortlessly or smoothly as, as, as just being, you know, a compassionate community. So the next one is the Racial Equality and Leadership Savannah Task Force. That, of course, reminds me of the Chamber of Commerce's Leadership Savannah. So it's kind of a play on words. The next one is the Savannah Cares Task Force. And that's a use-of-force review of, of police department policies. Again, I think that's a very worthy one. And I understand they've actually adopted some of the recommendations. So this is not a dreadful list. It's more the sheer volume of it in the absence of allowing policy to be discussed or emerged where it's supposed to emerge, which is at city council meetings.
At council.
Yeah. The next one is the Proud Task Force. The next one is the Savannah Faith Task Force. The next one is Advocates for Restorative Communities in Savannah Task Force. The next one is Housing Savannah Task Force. Next one is the Hispanic Outreach Task Force. And then Working Savannah Task Force.
Right, right.
So I, I mean, Working Savannah Task Force is geared towards working with the Central Labor Council. So we're, 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 we're discovering or coddling, I don't know which it is, the unions, the churches, other groups. It, it's, it seems a little too ambitious or too smart by half considering that none of this gets discussed at council because we got a roadblock from the mayor on what can be discussed at council. So this is, in the absence of real democracy and real process as, as guaranteed by the city charter, we're doing a workaround. And it gives the appearance of great concern, which I'm sure there is. But at the end of the day, I'm with Kerry. Where are the deliverables? The city is famous for spending millions of dollars on studies and consultants. And someone once said, Ralph Glover said that the city library downtown is filled with studies collecting dusts on the shelves. So that's my take.
Look, if you, if you've been watching us for a while and you go to our Murray Silver episode, you'll hear me and Murray go back and forth and rant about how a lot of the task forces really mirror kind of the Democratic Party caucus system and just making sure that everybody has a quote-unquote "seat at the table", you know, and it, and I think it's at best a fifty-fifty hit-and-miss venture where, you know, some of these task forces are going to produce some policy changes. And a lot of them are going to just be there for show. And we'll see, the jury is out on which ones will perform and which ones will not. So let's keep it moving. Let's, let's go to our number eight top issue, city council, first year in office. And, you know, again, if you've followed us since 2019, you'll know that the city council issue of note for that election was, in fact, the arena. And John, in 2020, the arena, that, the arena sailed. I mean, the, the ship sailed on the arena in 2020. I mean, that's, that is the definitive end game. I, you know, I mean, we had a lot of discussions in the 2019 election cycle about potentially fully canceling the arena, relocating the location of the arena. I want to say around May or June of 2020 became clear that this was really not going to be up for discussion and was moving forward. And I want to give a shout out to older woman Keisha Gibson-Carter, who is the only person on council to have a very clear, consistent voting record that not really on board with how this project has gone down. So I just want to give her a shout out for the consistency on this issue. And Kerry, I want, if we can get these links into the chat around number eight. I already did the first three into the chat feed, but I want to make sure people get these, these citations. Because, I mean, these are just kind of, you know, you could tell from the May and June articles, this is when the ship sailed. They voted on a $5 billion insurance policy. Or, you know, every vote that they took, it became more and more real that this was gonna just move on. Let's be clear to recap before you go on your, on your response, John. This is $167 million, you know, forty-five million of it's borrowed. We got no funding source for the Canal District, which is, they say, it's going to be necessary for the arena to be successful. John, you've been here a long time. What do you think?
This is, if this was a internet show, it would be the arena gone wild. This is Splosh Gone Wild. That ship has sailed. And, and that's what critics of our commentary kept saying all through 2019 and 2020. And I finally realized, yeah, that ship has sailed, but it's a pirate ship. The whole idea of building an, an arena just, just didn't make sense. It, it maybe did twenty years ago when the, when the project was, was hatched and conceptualized. But for a lot of different reasons, it, it drug on and drug on and drug on. And you know what? You know, there's not very many manual transmission cars today. And that's because it was just easier, better, more convenient. And, and people wanted automatic transmissions. So we're stuck with a manual transmission project in a automatic transmission world. I feel a lot for Bernetta Lanier, who I, I know would, would have rather seen that sort of investment of one hundred and sixty-five million and probably another two hundred million when all is said and done for the Canal District. If it could have manifested itself in her district in a different fashion, I'm sure she would have appreciated that. But she was married to all the work that had come before her election to council. And she's doing a fine job managing it. But it, it's, it's a project that should have changed course and didn't. So that's what I have to say about it. Careful how you vote in Splosh. There was a lot of trickery in the two referendum ballots that, that enabled and authorized this arena. enabled and authorized this arena. For instance, in the first one, there's only two words out out of three hundred words explaining the Splosk vote and the arena and arena, A N arena, was all that was said. And that 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 wasn't a mistake, that that was minimized so so that, you know, people wouldn't question it too much and ask too many questions. Anyway, that ship sailed, it's a pirate ship. Bernetta Lanier is doing the very best she can with it. But I I I
I think I I hope and I and I we're we're supposed to interview on next week's episode, older woman Bernetta Lanier from the West Side. I'm hopeful that we could have an in-depth conversation about this, because I think despite our differences on the project, I I think we would all agree, not enough community benefits, not enough concessions. You know, I think it's just.
The parking lot, the the parking lot. What what is it? Seven hundred thousand dollars a year for parking lot?
Sure, Chad and Steel. You know, I mean, again, it's it's all it's all it's all kind of a bitter pill to swallow, I think, for many on council. You've seen several of the votes for the things in and around it. Sometimes it's six, three, sometimes it's five, four, sometimes it's eight to one with just older woman Gibson Carter opposing, you know, I I think it's it's been a tough issue, certainly in light of COVID, which kind of just took over the whole year. We're gonna talk more about that up on the list here. But let's move on to our next item.
Number seven.
This is number seven. Number seven, top ten issues, City of Savannah City Council Year One. Rockingham Farms Deal.
Cedar Deal.
The Cedar Deal, right, about land that's in the county. I mean, honestly, let's be honest, this is probably the single greatest achievement of the of the first year, right? I mean, in terms of like policy, right? This is probably the single greatest, you know, achievement they've gotten, right?
Yeah, the enthusiasm of the newly minted council really showed in this deal.
Yeah, I think it was seven to two or eight to one, maybe. I don't I gotta go back and look and see what the vote was.
Well, they did a lot smarter, Chuck, that they
Well, let me let me allow me to let me to elaborate. You know, I I Chuck Fagan, I spent four and a half years as a member of the Downtown Savannah Authority, AKA the Bond Authority, right? And during that time was the Eddie Deloetz administration, which resulted in a quarter billion. And when I say that, I mean that. One quarter billion dollars of bond dollars were committed mostly to tourism development projects for Richard Kessler, the Eastern War, the Arena, and other issues around downtown. I voted against all of them. None of them had enough concessions on it. And I think in part because of Better Savannah, in part because of our own advocacy. I think the two thousand and nineteen city elections, and Kerry, I'm interested in your thoughts on this. I think I think it just made that an issue for voters, and it made
A lot of pressure.
Officially, right, the pressure relented and and resulted in people saying, well, look, we can't just do this bond deal straight up. You gotta you gotta help us out over here, or you gotta do this or that. And so the Rockingham Farms Deal
Became a better deal.
A better deal than the past ten years of bond spending, right? In the end, oh, yeah, the way that we were doing business before, a slightly, a slight improvement.
Yeah.
In the end, there was still no guarantees on the labor of the construction of the project. There was some guarantees on the end labor units and some investment in Savannah Technical College courses and the Housing Fund of Savannah, you know, I think was involved with a million dollar grant as well as a part of this deal. So I think we see the first cracking of a new direction of policy towards bond spending in in Savannah. It's not as good as I would have wanted to see it, but it's better than the last ten years of bond spending. What were you gonna say, John?
I was gonna say a- a- as a topographical point here, let's remember that the issues and the questioning by the new council on this deal, on this Cedar Deal were happening before the door shut on the rules change package. So they they threw their tenacity and enthusiasm as a new council definitely made this deal, which was a run-of-the-mill garden variety Chatham County Savannah deal into a better deal, and they deserve a lot of credit for that. They could not do that today because of the rules change package, which we're coming up on. The last thing I want to say about this is despite the improvements and the commitments that no one in any of those, how many square feet of warehousing is it, Chuck? Two million?
Ultimately, it's supposed to be ten million square feet. I mean, you know, but they this happened during this process, like you said, is that Pat Monahan created a mechanism where the main benefit of the bond for the interchange would not be triggered until three million square feet had been built, right? So I mean, you know, again, you look at Rob Hernandez, Stephanie Cutter, the deals they put together for the Eastern War, Richard Kessler and the Arena.
These are sweetheart deals.
They were just they were just giveaways, right? Just pure giveaways, you know, and just
It's what got the last council.
It's what got the last council voted off, right? But this deal was like, all right, here's a spoonful of sugar with the medicine. All right, I know it's not great. It was still corporate welfare. It's still corporate welfare. It's still, here's our credit card. Please give us some jobs for our people.
Yeah, two things, two last things on this, Chuck. Number one is take a look and consider how long the Fifth District has been strung out on this Fairgrounds deal. Okay. You know,
This is a great point. This is a great point.
Year and a half, two years of hurry up and wait. Oh, we gotta do this. Oh, we forgot to do that. Oh, now we didn't wait long enough.
But ninety days into council, we have the momentum and ability to execute a thirty seven million dollar bond issuance for land that isn't even in the city at the time.
Right, that's my point, Chuck. Thank you, is that because this is something that Cedar wanted.
Yes.
This sucked out all the energy, oxygen, and attention to city council for the first three months, January, February, March of their of the new council. Monahan was saying, we gotta do this. This is critical. Turn all your attention to this, and we gotta make this happen. Imagine if they had taken that approach to the Fairgrounds deal. They didn't. So this is a very selective administrative decision to who gets green lighted and who gets slow roll. And Cedar is always getting green lighted. The last point I want to make on this is a lot of candidates that we supported and others started to call for independent audits of Cedar contracts, whether it's this Rockingham deal or the film studio deal or Crossroads Business Center, wherever it is. Everyone knows that Cedar enjoys reduced or no property taxes in exchange for job creation. But they never go back. And I say they, we, the people who are not receiving our property taxes from the deal are never allowed to go in and independently verify that, yeah, you created the hundred and fifty jobs you promised at this rate. So unfortunately, Chuck, this Rockingham Farms deal, to the best of my research and review, does not have any boilerplate requirement of an independent audit at some reasonable time, you know, after a million square feet are built or five million square feet are built, to go in and confirm that the tax dollars that were abated not received were well vested in the outcomes of these jobs at this rate, which was seventeen dollars an hour, no less. So again, close, better, but still not not perfect, no cigar.
I would like to add that in Savannah and Chatham County, we can no longer just focus on retail warehouse manufacturing and service as our only industries. If we want to get away from a poverty mindset, we cannot think with that poverty mindset anymore. Like, we need to start thinking about what other industries can we bring in besides these industries that we keep thinking about that keeps us only at a certain hourly wage? We should be bringing in industries that will give us salary wages that are more sustainable to get us off entitlement programs.
Well, that's all Cedar knows, Kerry, is warehousing. For for all intensive purposes, they're the warehouse kings. And now, because there's some fat, juicy, low-hanging fruit with film production, they're gonna take it. And and screw the Fifth District, because Cedar wants the glory and the profits. So everybody rolls over, capitulates, and it makes it happen. When the right people are behind a project, things happen. If it's a a an organic, community-based, community benefits-generated concept, man, you're in the back of the bus, baby. And and it's what's wrong with much of what we do here economically.
I think it just goes back to what you've talked about for years with us, John, is that you know, Cedar is always like, oh, they can't be touched. Like, oh, Cedar is this. Right, it's like, oh, but you know, again, let me let me let me be loud and clear, okay? Cedar derives its power from an underlying ordinance passed by Savannah City Council, right?
That's correct.
If Savannah City Council
It's a partnership.
Correct. If Savannah City Council were to repeal that ordinance and decide that they wanted a different organization to be working with us on this, you know, with a different governor and a different delegation, it could a hundred percent happen. You know, and so so, you know, they have they have it's not that we 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 would say they've grossly failed. The question is, we don't really even know. We just have to take their word for it. And that, when it comes to public dollars, I mean, I'll just quote Ronald Reagan here, trust but verify. I mean, you know, like, why should we just take the Cedar Chairman of the Board of Directors at their word? That what is happening in these deals is happening.
It's one of the largest systemic structural problems that our community suffers from. And I I I don't, you know, people I know welcome accountability, Chuck. They're they're willing to show you the books. They're willing to uphold their end of a deal and have it verified. Cedar does not. And for our viewers, every, almost every substantive economic development authority has these requirements in their deals. Okay, we're not asking to put a man on Mars next week. Standard operating procedure all across the United States and economic development authorities.
Sure.
But not here. Let's move on.
Not here. We're special. What's what's number six, John?
Okay, uh, oh. This one's heartfelt, and I don't want to spend a lot of time on it because
I do.
Yeah, okay, well.
I mean, we don't have to, but I mean, I think it's, I think it's a very big, big moment.
I think the I think the public is figuring it out now, Chuck. So let's let's tell the viewers what.
Go ahead, go ahead.
It's it's the unrelenting attacks on Keisha Gibson Carter for some poor choice of words in executive session that wound up being the equivalent of the first atomic bomb test on on Bikini Atoll in in the South Pacific. You would think that she had split the freaking atom, almost slipped there.
So so for those who don't know what we're talking about, if you've been living under a rock in Savannah, older woman at large, Keisha Gibson Carter, who, in our opinion, had the toughest and was the largest upset of all of the races. I mean, wouldn't you agree with that, Kerry? And John, you'd agree that Keisha Gibson Carter defeating Carol Bell, a black woman, two-term incumbent on council, thirty eight-year employee of city council.
Beloved by the city.
Community and the Loved by everybody, very cross-sectional support. The fact that she beat her was a very marked shift in Savannah. I think probably the most telling of all the elections in my personal opinion. But that that political note aside, right? This is a citywide elected official who came in on a progressive platform that many of her colleagues seemingly supported. And from the get-go, I mean, at least by, say, February or March of last year, about sixty or ninety days into the term, you just see this five to four division appear. And you've got these four black older women, mostly, you know, two from the West Side and two citywide elected officials. And you've got four district alderpeople and the mayor that are essentially running the show since then. We're gonna talk more about this. But this this tension of council starts with the, you know, positions of council, the Rockingham Farms Deal really comes to a head during COVID and the fallout from COVID. We'll talk more about that soon here as well. But ultimately, this winds up during the city manager search in executive session, something that is not supposed to be brought out into public. I mean, executive session for the purposes of real estate or personnel is not supposed to be debated openly. And as the story goes, you know, a couple of F-bombs are dropped in executive session. And whether they were directed at another council member or not, this is two thousand and twenty one. I mean, you know, we just had a president who regularly used curse words for four years. I I'm not sure that that it's 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 palpable to the electorate. And as you said, John, I think the electorate's coming around. What were you gonna say, Kerry?
Um, so I'm gonna weigh in as as a as a woman on this one. Because I think that one of the biggest things that we don't recognize is that as a community, I don't know if it's because we live in the South or what have you, but we are still really much more harsh as a community on women. And I think that Jim made a good point last week is the misogyny factor is that we're much more critical on women than and harsher in our comments as as a whole, in general, as a public than we are on men. If she was a man, my question to the community and to the public would be, would we have put such a stamp on calling her crazy or stereotyping her? And calling her crazy is that that is our first initial resort in in making those judgments. And then she gets painted as this, and that there must be some sort of breakdown going on at home when we have no factual evidence to to say that.
It it was vicious. It was sideways. It was uncalled for.
We talked a lot about the connection with Jolene Byrne as well a couple of years ago on the school board and how, you know,
her.
Again, there are legitimate policy issues you could debate any of those women on, Jolene, Keisha Gibson Carter. There are policy issues you could push them on and stick to that. But rather, they make it about the personality and the leadership characteristics. This is a woman who led nonprofits for twenty five years in Savannah, right?
I mean, not easy.
And 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 was good at it, seemingly was good at it, right? You know, I you would know, John, you were there. So I mean, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, listen, I think there was a lot of harsh feelings, residual feelings over her beating Carol Bell. And I and I think the newspaper wanted to extract their pound of flesh over it. I I I the hyperbole and constancy of the media, what was just so unbecoming. I I understand the word choices might have offended somebody. Personally, I I like people who are expressive, okay? I can be expressive. I don't see it as some sort of fatal flaw. This was a revered woman who had worked in with probably the the single most gut-wrenching service area in our community, de- dealing with abuse victims and doing it well. And then to be treated by her fellow council members and the media the way she was, I it was just overkill. And and people have now realized that. I I think people are going, yeah, you know what? She really is a great addition to council. And I I like her. So
I love your line about the pound of flesh from the newspaper, you know, since we got a shout out the other day, Adam Van Brimer might be watching. I I I think, you know, you guys lost every single endorsement you made in twenty nineteen, and I'm sure it ticks you guys off. You know, I'm sure it's embarrassing to have been one of only five newspapers in the country to have endorsed Donald Trump. I'm sure it's embarrassing to endorse. I'm sure it's embarrassing to endorse seven people for council and to lose all seven times. But, I just don't think it gives you the right to take a, take these engagements with public officials to a new level. I mean, certainly, no level of scrutiny towards a few of our upcoming issues. You know, like the CARES Act funding or casinos. I mean, certainly, certainly not enough effort on real things.
Yeah, you can watch two million dollars in critical funding and.
And get no investigative coverage, but you can just say a mean, mean word. And my God, you know, we need to write fifteen columns. I think my favorite part, and we'll move on after this, but my favorite part about this was that, you know, for a while, there was a couple of weeks ago where there was nothing in the paper about older woman Keisha Gibson Carter for like three or four straight weeks. Like, it's just no council business, no narrative. And then all of a sudden, there's an editorial, and I think that Carrie's got this in the chat of how much more older woman Keisha Gibson Carter could be. She could be so much more, and this is right. If she just bend the knee. I mean, that's basically the message that Adam Van Brimer was sending there. Just bend the knee. You know, and I, I for one applaud anyone who refuses to do so. Um, I don't agree, I don't think we agree with everything that older woman keeps a good Carter, as, as Donna said, but I think overall, she's presented an alternative to the status quo. Go ahead, John.
Well, can, can I offer one, one thing? Regardless, we have to divorce ourselves from judging her character by how we think she conducts herself or how she looks. I mean, that is still a huge issue that we have in, in the wor- in the world and globally when it comes to patriarchy. Is that we need to look at her as an individual and what she delivers in the function of her to do her job.
Listen, she became a target, a political target for some offhanded remarks. And you know what? It, the, the crime doesn't fit the event. It, it was purposeful. It was political. It was structural. And I, Chuck, I, 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 I was trying to jump in here because I want people to know that while we've had some, I've had some very civil conversations in text with Adam Van Brimer, who represents the newspaper that we're going on about right here in the Keisha Gibson Carter treatment. Um, he's been invited to come onto this show and talk to me about important issues that he writes all the time about, and he refuses to do it. I, I guess he feels that, uh, either that would not be successful or, or that we're not significant enough for his.
Well, I mean, he's got two podcasts of his own. I, you know, I have said this, uh, to you privately, but I'll say it publicly. I mean, we're talking about difference makers in Savannah. I don't, I don't know how John McMaster's name doesn't come up uh, in that list of Savannah difference makers. So, you know, home court or away court, I think it'd be a fascinating conversation. Uh, and let's just put that out in the ether in the universe and see if it comes back. Let's move on to number five. Uh, number five is the city council, uh, being collectively passive on casino gambling. Okay, this is an issue we raised during the two thousand and twenty primaries. Uh, in our support of Jeff Rayno for state house, and then ultimately just going after Ron Stevens' record. Um, you know, Chatham County has eighteen percent, seventeen percent poverty rate. Savannah's got twenty-five, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, depending on any given day, probably more now. I just don't think it's a good idea to put a casino in this. It's a bad idea.
Like tossing a freaking match into a, a, a stack of, hey, it's bad policy, it's bad for the community. Uh, they're gonna talk about the jobs. You, you know something, Chuck? They, they keep talking about the importance of job creation and how many fucking new containers come through the port and how many, how big SCAD is. You know what? Nothing's changed on, on a structural level at, at, at poverty, at, at twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight percent. So, you know what? Guys, your ideas suck. It hasn't worked. Time to, time to rethink it. So, anyway, the whole travesty of this is, um, city council evidently has a legislative agenda. But the people that I've talked to on council had no input on it.
Well, let's talk about city council and resolutions in this context, too. Couple, last council meeting, we had a resolution, a non-binding resolution passed eight-to-one to denounce or support a bill to end stand your ground. Right?
Right.
Right? This is the Ahmaud Arbery issue.
Right.
The, I, I, easy thing to support. I support it. I'm, I'm down for it. But we can't give an up or down vote on a bind, non-binding resolution in opposition of casino gambling within the city limits of Savannah, all right? And Ca- Carrie, you've talked to Representative Malo, and I've seen his public statements about this. And Representative Malo said, you know, I'm looking to hear from the largest municipality that I represent. I'm waiting to hear from them. What do they want us to do here in the delegation? So, I'm telling this city council, you need to put a vote on this before the end of the legislative session because there is a high likelihood, this is gonna pass the state house, pass the state senate this time, and it's gonna be on our ballot next year. And if you wait until then, what kind of leadership is that?
You, you know, it, it is such a, um, foolish political mistake because, you know, we opened the communal a little bit here. A non-binding resolution is how you described it, and that's exactly what it is. It isn't gonna guarantee one damn thing. But it eliminates the possibility of two things happening. Number one is that the delegation votes and supports it and it passes. And when we complain about it, they can say, you guys didn't come to us. You were silent. How, how was I, am I supposed to read your mind to council? Okay, that's number one. Number two is, uh, I, I'm convinced the majority of people, I, I'd say, you know, sixty, forty are opposed to gambling at this point in time in this community for the reasons we've talked about, poverty, job creations that don't really create. Um, why would you be an elected official that has no real downside by sending a non-binding resolution uh, against casino gambling in the city of Savannah? Uh, you could at least defend yourself when, when you come up for reelection because you can say, hey, I tried. I did, I did the best I could. And that mean old legislature, uh, took it on their own. So, it's, it's confounding in, in, in many dimensions. One, the simplicity of it, and two, the political expediency of it.
I'm gonna quote, uh, Coco Papi on this one. Um, I remember, uh, last year, she did an excellent interview with the, um, with the GPB. And one of the biggest, uh, concerns that she brought forward with the community and with the deep center was, uh, the confusion on why would we want to bring in entity which will, uh, bring in more issues, structural issues for Chatham County, Savannah, when we still haven't dealt with the poverty rate? If we could deal with those things first, then maybe we could think about bringing in a casino. But we inherently know that if people get addicted to one more thing in Savannah to give us one more thing that we have to deal with, that is, that, that's another structural issue.
Great point, Carrie. And, you know, for the record, I, I'm, I don't gamble. Uh, I gambled once in Lake Tahoe and I got a free meal. That's how good a gambler I was. Um, but, so it doesn't matter to me, one iota, uh, personally, if gambling happens here or not. However, I don't wanna have higher crime rates. I don't wanna have, uh, more problems at a, as you pointed out, and Coco pointed out, at a structural baseline level here. Where the, the community is not prepared to absorb the impacts of gambling in, in this city at this time. So, anyway, done with that one, eh? Dumb.
Dumb, uh, you know, it might go at Midway, it might go at Poole, or who knows? But, I mean, there are a lot of, just structurally, before we move on, there are a lot of different phases to fight this in. And this is the phase where your local leaders have to be on record. Where do you stand? Right? Because the more we have our local leaders against this, the more likely it is when the referendum comes up that it just gets defeated, right? You know, so, I mean, that's, that's, uh, it's all about power. It's all about policy. You know, this is what we're, we're looking for. Let's move on to number four. Uh, this connects to our other issue with Keisha Gibson Carter, older woman getting, as ethics complaints filed against her. This is the completely failed city manager search. Number four issue, the completely failed city manager search two thousand and twenty, okay? Uh, John, why don't you start us off and Carrie give us your response?
Well, uh, it, no, no one will, uh, argue that the city manager is the single most important uh, position and person in government at the city of Savannah. And given the, uh, critical importance of that person, he's, he's calling plays, he's, he's you, you know, in the wheelhouse, and all the departments are, are floating around and under his supervision. Um, why we would take three candidates, fully vetted, fully, uh, uh, researched by the search firm and presented to us and not be able to pick one is, I'm sorry, it's a failure of all of council, okay? And it, 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 it falls down on the, on the five-four division on council. Matter of fact, in this case, I understand there were three camps because there were three candidates. Uh, two people liked one and, uh, four people liked another and three people liked another. So, you really didn't even have a majority. Uh, it, it, and, and Van wanted a unanimous vote, which is absolutely impossible, absolutely unrealistic. So, I'm not so certain that, um, uh, because Van's preferred choice didn't make it into the top three, I'm not so certain that this thing wasn't structured to fail. Uh, I have nothing substantive to base that on. It's a feeling. Don't, don't send me hate mail. I'm sorry. Um, it just seemed the mayor was very pouty about, uh, one of the candidates from another city not getting into the list. Tried to get him in. He wasn't successful. Uh, so, again, single most important, top of the, tip of the spear position, and we're still struggling uh, to fill that position. It's not a good look for council. And the reason it's not filled is because of the division on council. And I don't care what you say, I fall down on the side of those that are, that are trying to be progressive and bring policy, structural changes to, to the lay of the land. So, uh, travesty, unfortunate, and I think it's, it's gonna happen again because I, I, I don't see the votes changing around, but I hope they do. That's what I got.
Um, I think that we need to, uh, as a community, give, uh, greater insight to what we're looking for because this has been a reciprocal pattern. It's almost like a hamster on a wheel that keeps going round and round. Um, we desecrated the character of, uh, Smalltoni when she ran or she became city manager. We, we hated her and she was a homegrown Savanian. And then since then, we've been happy with nobody except for Michael Brown. So, I think that we need to be really, really cognizant of what exactly as a community we're asking for and write it down. If we need to have focus group after focus group to deal with this and come up with a solution, we need to do it and put something concrete. Um, because it almost is like we're looking at some, somebody as a community in between that's either, one, not completely homegrown, but number two, somebody who understands all the intricacies of Savannah and gets the culture of Savannah and the political climate as well.
I just wanna add, we hired the current superintendent of schools on a five-to-four vote. Okay, uh, you know, uh, there should be nothing controversial about doing business on a five-to-four vote. Business needs to get done. You were sent there to do business, right? To do our business, our public business. Uh, so that's my first point. You know, I'll say this, I think the business community writ large, the status quo, people who benefit from non-major policy changes, I think they largely have been happy with the city managers. I, I, I think Michael Brown, I think Commander Sulu, you know, as I call him, Pat Mon- I thought I called Pat Monahan because he kinda looks like Commander Sulu from Star Trek, the original series. But, uh, you know, even before him, Robert Hernandez, Stephanie Cutter, Rochelle Smalltoni. I mean, you know, the, these, these people did the bidding in one way or another of many parts of the status quo. And I think for the first time, because we put a new council in place, there was just not enough votes for another status quo candidate. And I think that most of the finalists were, were relatively status quo-y. I mean, there, there were some things to like about them, each of them. I, I probably want a few people to say, I met all three of the candidates. Okay, so, you know, I, having interacted with them, I thought they were all capable of doing the job. And I felt like if they, any of them that got hired, you know, was gonna be a new play, a new direction, you know?
And Chuck, let, let's let the audience understand that you not, you didn't just meet them in passing and shake their hand pre-COVID. Uh, you actually went to the interviews and had, uh, one-on-one.
Group setting slash groups. I was gonna say more of a group setting, not one-on-one, but, but, you know, yeah. That a small group setting where we just got to ask questions and answers and, you know, I, I thought the lady from California, uh, Kahlua Barnes was a dynamic candidate. Uh, she was my favorite of the three. But just again, unfortunate blunder, a complete disappointment. Um, and we'll just have to move on unfortunately because we're running short on time here. Number three, city council issue of the first year in office. I wanna wrap this up basically and just say COVID is, this is COVID, right? I mean, like COVID is just dominated the first year of council. I mean, the specific thing we have written is the debacle of the initial CARES Act funding. The two million dollars turned over to SBAC's long-time clients in the downtown quarter. We'll get to that point in a second. But I mean, really, the entire fallout from COVID, from slight delays to casting St. Patty's Day to, you know, politicizing, bringing the governor of New York down, you know, I, I, I mean, this, this cat and mouse game. Marika said it best last week, John. Jim Marika said, when COVID hit, it seemed that Mayor Van Johnson shifted into a gear and just has never shifted back out of that gear.
Correct.
Right? We have been, I wanna, I wanna make a, a point here before you guys open up. We've been under an emergency order from the mayor and council since March. Nonstop. It's been renewed every time.
Yeah.
And as we talked about last week, we can't live in a state of emergency forever. So, what are your thoughts on our number three issue, uh, COVID? The CARES Act funding fallout. What do you think, John and Carrie?
Oh, well, I think it delayed the decay of downtown. I think that the intention was that, I don't know entirely if it was fair, but the intention, I think, was set to invest in downtown because there's where, that's where a lot of jobs are, but a lot of people were already laid off because of COVID. Um, and I, I think that it just delayed the decay of downtown, and I think that it's bringing in more corporate businesses. I mean, uh, Gina's closed last week at twenty-seven-year staple. Several bars have closed. So, I think that those are major considerations that it delayed it and it didn't solve it. And I don't think that we knew that we were gonna be in this COVID thing for as long as it's being, uh, prolonged.
Yep.
Carrie, we lost your picture, but we can hear you loud and clear.
Okay.
Um, I'll, I'll make a couple of, uh, there, you're back. Thank you. Um, make no mistake, I, I believe and give huge credit to Van Johnson for comforting this community in a time of unparalleled, uh, pandemic crisis. Um, I, I would, would not, probably not have done much of anything different. I think he's been absolutely, uh, a gift to, uh, address it so openly and so willingly and so consistently. And he deserves a tremendous amount of credit and respect for that. Um, however, having said that, uh, this two million dollars of CARES Fund money was, as Chuck pointed out, um, very quickly, uh, funneled over to, you know, very quickly funneled over to, you know, ki- kind of the insiders' club to translate down to the community in terms of aid and assistance. Well, the vast majority of that money, that $2 million, went to downtown businesses. And, you know, the Emerald Zone is not the only zone in the city. You don't have to remind the people in the first and the fifth district of that. They're, they're now on the downside of priorities here, unfortunately. So $2 million cash infusion happens and the mayor and the city manager at the time, Pat Monahan, funneled this money over like, like that to the Small Business Administration offices. And they simply, I'll, I'll condense this, they basically went through their books on who owed them money from the first phase of PPE funding. And they applied the funds and paid off their debt. Well, that wasn't the highest and best use of the money. I think only one African-American business got any money. I supposedly Savannah Magazine and South Magazine got $40,000, $50,000. Why? I don't know, but this was a huge failure that, you know, compared to Keisha Gibson Carter using a couple colorful words, the amount of press that she got for that versus how little press Van and Monahan got on this executive funneling of CARES money blew my mind.
And let's be clear, we still don't have a clear definitive story. Who directed the SBAC to spend those funds that way? When was that direction given? Was it given by the mayor? Was it given by Pat Monahan, the city manager at the time?
Was it?
Was it a unilateral decision by Tony O'Reilly, the head of SBAC? And I go, I just want to go back and describe again, what is the SBAC? It is, you know,
All Business Assistance Corporation.
Small Business Assistance Corporation, locally owned, you know, it's, it's the people who get the inside track. You know, always, it's already the people who are winners. And what they did, and here's the thing too, the, the way they spent the money. I, I'm not even totally opposed to all those businesses having gotten the money, John. I mean, it's, it's not even really about that, right? What they did was a balance transfer, okay? What they did was they liquidated SBAC's books. Let's be clear.
No money flowed back in.
No real money of the $2.1 million CARES Act funding. Very little of that money actually made its way into the local economy. What happened was is previous loans of SBAC local, now again, is it good for those loans to be cleared?
Yeah, maybe, maybe it let some of those.
Yeah, I'm sure it helped them, but did that money get out into the community immediately like it was sold to the public? No.
Was it, wasn't it like my $600 stimulus check that went right into my checking account?
Right. It's not like everybody, correct. That's a great way to put it, you know, and, and, you know, again, call out the media here, very little coverage from Savannah Morning News, very little. They hired investigative journalists a half a year ago, not, not even a peep about this story.
They're, they're too busy with ethics hearings, Chuck.
Sure, sure.
I mean, that's, they're especially out, but fundamental investigative reporting on a $2 million absolute blunder. You know, a couple of paragraphs here and there.
All right, all right. So I want to connect this number three issue with our number two issue. So, so remember, number three is the mismanagement or, you know, just the bundling of, of three, $2.1 million of CARES Act funding, okay? So that's in March, April, May of 2020. And what happens afterwards when you fail to get money into the community? Carrie, what's, what's the number two issue on our list here?
Homicide rate is at 33% in one year. And I just want to go ahead and add this, in 2017, Savannah was among the top 30 states in the, I mean, cities in the country for the highest murder rate and crime rate. So, you know, that, that says a lot.
Yeah. You know, let's all take a deep breath and remember, these sort of numbers cost Edna Jackson her reelection. I mean, I, I just can't say it any other way that the, this rate at which violent crime and homicides are increasing here. You, you can't sweep this under the rug. You, you can't ignore it. You, you can appoint a task force or two or 10, but until this number, which is the litmus test on public safety, I'm sorry. I know it's a very complex subject, public safety, but this is the litmus test. And if we continue to fail to protect people and have this level of homicide and violent crime increases, this council is doomed.
I just want to connect it to number three. You know, it turns out when you use some of the only money we were going to get from the feds during this crisis, when you use it to shore up the ledger books of SBAC's clients, rather than get that money out into a hurting community. It turns out that when most of the crime and violent crime is derived from the drug trade, which is derived from lack of opportunity for people at the bottom. You know, I, you know, again, I'm, 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 I'm hard pressed to not connect those two issues. Am I suggesting that the 33% increase is a direct result of the CARES Act funding? No, I think it was bound to go up, but it's gotta be part of it. It's probably a third of that increase, the fact that we didn't get enough money out into the poorest of the communities. You know, again, why are we stimulating businesses that are seemingly doing pretty well? Again, I mean, some of them are doing very well. I'm just pointing that out. I'm sure some of them are helped. I'm not saying it was a complete failure here, guys.
I'm just saying. Magazine needed $50,000.
Hey, 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 preach it, brother, preach it. Look, ultimately, like John just said, public safety is the litmus test of all local government. If this trend continues, it is hard to see this council being, anybody being reelected from this council.
They shouldn't, based on the math, I mean, the history.
Go ahead, Carrie.
So I did a paper back in 2015, what creates the, the crime issues? And it's, we all know it's economic hardships, but preventative modeling, knowing that Savannah is in an empowerment zone, I think that giving more communities, you know, chartered ownership, creating more community enterprises will give them what they need to ask for dollars for their specific communities to help eradicate the issues and fill in the gaps.
Well, I'll, I'll throw a different metric on it and then let's move on to the, the top problem. But, you know, in the year in which the murder rate climbed 33%, how many more containers transited through the port? Do you feel me?
Yeah.
We're, we are not addressing, it's like the panhandling ordinance, okay? We're treating the most remote symptoms and maybe even our own psychology of guilt and, and avoidance. But, you know, Shalina Cook Jones, Jolene Byrne, they were very quick to say, you guys are missing, you're not treating the root causes and how dare you come out with this Faustian solution when you're failing at the structural source level of these problems. So again, 33% increase in crime, I, I ask you, how, how many more buildings did SCAD buy? And how many more containers went through the port?
That's probably, if there's one thing we missed, was probably the increasing encroachment of SCAD. That's, that will, I think we should just have a show all about SCAD one day. I think we should just have, we should just get some guests, just have a show all about that one day.
That's the title, All About SCAD.
All About SCAD. Let's get it. All right. The number one issue, I alluded to this last week, John's alluded to it. The number one issue, I, I'm going to call this the source of the division on council, the source of the problems. And it is Van Johnson, Mayor Van Johnson's Mitch McConnell-ization of the Savannah City Council. I talked a little bit about this last week with Jim, a little bit about it with Murray. In April of 2020, Mayor Johnson, along with Alderman, Dietrich Leggett, Nick Palumbo, Curtis Curti, Alderwoman Linda Walter-Brian, a five to four vote, changed the rules of city council for the first time in 25 years. Prior rules allowed any single member to place an item on the official agenda for discussion and debate, as long as it was given to the clerk in time, right? Now that we have this progressive change, we have these women on council who are fighting for change. Now it takes five votes to get on council. And, you know, John, you were on Alderwoman Keisha Gibson Carter's Public Access Show on ATR a few weeks ago.
Right.
You rattled off a list of cities and it's basically like five or, we're like in the super minority in Georgia of cities like this. There's only like a couple other cities that have these draconian rules. We're beyond the Western front by ourselves, really.
Chuck, the, the only cities that have those sort of requirements that we have are strong mayor form of governments.
Correct.
All 11 of the largest cities in the state of Georgia. I won't bore you with the list, but everywhere from 85,000 to 200,000 plus population, if they have a city manager, city council, form of government, any single member of council can put an item on the agenda, provided that it's done before the cutoff to publish the agenda. We, we're in no man's land here. And, and you know, it, it's the single biggest impediment to progress. You know, people, people went to Van, I think, and said, don't allow this progressive group of crazy new alderpeople to change business as usual. We've got too much on the line. You've got to figure out a way to contain them. And this is the solution. So I,
All right, I just want to give, this is just Chuck's definition of politics, right? So politics is, first of all, it's policy, right? And when you can't, when you don't have the votes to change policy, your next best thing is to show differentiation, right? So in Congress, in the US Congress, this is what's called a message bill, a messaging bill, a bill that your party, your caucus, whatever, you know it's going to fail. You understand it's not going to pass. You don't have the votes, right? Let's take casino gambling, impact fees, some, some, some fees for SCAD, a new relationship with the port, some audits proceeded. John, we know that we might not have the votes on council to get these policies passed, right? I think we all, Carrie, you'd agree, there's probably not enough votes on council today to pass those votes. But for sure, there's two or three or four votes for them. And we'd like to see them debated and argued. And we'd like to know who's going to vote them down. So that way we know who got to support in the next election. And what this rule change did was prevent the public from seeing that discourse, from seeing that debate, from seeing that differentiation, so that we know who stands where. Are you with the developers? Are you with the citizens? Are you with the workers or are you with the builders? I mean, again, who are you with, you know, and this policy change of the rules single-handedly has given Van Johnson veto power over the agenda because he carries his four votes in his pocket pretty darn closely.
I, I don't believe for a minute that any one of those four votes on Van's side came to Van and said, you know what, I think we should somehow restrict.
Yeah, 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 I agree.
Yeah, th- this was conceived on high and then spread down like mana to his support base. I want to make one very important distinction that I don't think many people realize, and, and it's this. Van has single-handedly suppressed discussion, democracy, if you will, representational as it is through our elected officials who, who now cannot discuss freely what they want to discuss on our benefit. But the point is, 16 years Van served on council from 2004 until now. And that, that went through three different administrations. Went through the Otis Johnson administration, it went through the, the Jackson administration, it went through the Eddie Deloche administration, and you know what, Chuck? The entire time Van Johnson could put and probably did anything he wanted on the agenda without having to go get four additional votes. And now it's not a good idea.
Well, Carrie, I want to get your thoughts on this issue in a second, Carrie, but I just want to remind you, Chuck. What was our number one ad, our number one meme in 2019 during the general election? Do you remember what it was?
Yeah, two sides of one coin.
Two sides of the same coin. The reason that Van Johnson never had any messaging bills to embarrass Eddie is because they were voting together most of the time. A lot of people forget, he voted for all these bonds, he voted for, he voted for with Eddie Deloche on Robert Hernandez. And, you know, about the fire fee was about the only thing maybe he was even opposed on. So I don't know, Carrie, what are your, what are your thoughts on this number one issue?
I, I think we need a new form of government. This came up in conversation back in 2019 at the Hungry Club, and there were a lot of different ideas. You know, Otis Johnson was there, Joe Stefan was there, Clinton Minister, myself, and a lot of amazing people. And, you know, whether you go to a full-time council, whether we, you know, think about where we're going in the future, we do need a new form of government here in Savannah, because what is not working is that it's, it's not working as is. It wasn't working before, and until we fix it, it, it's not going to be, it's, it's just not going to work, so.
Well, I have one parting last thought. Okay. There's a reason this is at number one, Chuck. I think we understand it, but for, for everyone that's viewing, the following 10 problems or events that we chose to highlight and discuss tonight, some incredibly significant, you know, city manager search down to, you know, is, is fixing cracks in sidewalks really significant development. They all flow in one form or another from this number one. That's why it deserves the number one spot. You fix this and you fix Savannah. That's it.
All right. Well, we plan to go like an hour, 10, hour 15, gone a little bit more tonight on our episode, and Lord knows this dog wants me to go walk her. So let's give us just final thoughts and then we'll, we'll, we'll do a little bit of housekeeping for next week's episode.
I, I got nothing. I, I, I kind of spilled it all, going through the top 10-plus bonus observations. But I appreciate, appreciate everyone that has stuck with us and watched this. You know, we learn new stuff every day. We don't know everything. We don't pretend to. We, we try to be objective. We obviously have some very solid ideas about progressive policy and how it will help everyone into a more communal or, 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 or community-based results as opposed to the individualistic style of, of policy and politics here in Chatham County. So I just, I want to thank the viewers tonight, Chuck, for listening to us.
Excellent point, excellent point. Carrie?
I just want to remind people that, you know, they don't have to agree with us, you know, and it's not personal. These are a lot of our opinions. But, you know, people can take what they want or not what they want. But at the end of the day, please share, share the discussion, share the page, check out our website, Better Savannah.
Dot org.
Dot org.
Slash join DAX membership and send us a tip on what you want. I, I appreciate everybody joining us in. Next week, we're going to talk to Alderwoman Bernetta Lanier next Thursday at 7:00 PM, All Things West Savannah, the arena. What's going on there with the Saval Salvation Army project that has been highly controversial and has been tabled multiple times? And just your general thoughts, a year in on council, probably one probably one of our favorites on council to watch during the meetings. Speaking of which, council is probably still meeting right now. So we're gonna pop over and check out there and have a great evening. We appreciate you folks tuning in for this week's episode and be sure to join us next Thursday for our weekly show. Thanks, John.
Thank you. Yep. Thanks, you guys. Good work.